Hello. How are you doing? Hi, how are you doing?
We don't have to mention this as part of our correspondence.
This is just between us.
Probably million dollars each one. That's why I said I'm gonna mention that.
Oh, I didn't even want to see how much it is, but the cards are different. My card's different than yours.
Oh, okay. Mine says that they liked working with me more than Jeff.
It's funny. They must be politicians.
Why, I'm not a politician.
Well, Trump now says it was rogue killers who went into sounding canceling. And killed the, uh, I'm like, oh my God, can he just keep his mouth shut?
No. No, the answer is no.
I'm like, Jesus.
Most assuredly, no, he can't keep his mouth shut.
Shut up. Rose and killers go through the doors and I let them in.
All right, hold on, now all of a sudden I just thought that there's a question I've got on the table.
I'm forgetting one of these.
Yes, exactly. I got like two or three. Finally, I've been able to...
Well, you know what, I was gonna say, the problem is that I throw out my pens all over my bedroom.
I keep them all in the car so I can just switch out depending on where I'm going.
That's what I should do, is just keep them in a bag in the car or something so I can find them. I used to do that with my city beautiful commissioner pen. They've never left the car so that I would always hand them when I went to those events.
I don't know, Mary, you ready?
Yeah, I have one. I am one still.
Like to call this meeting together of the Henry Ford College Regular Board of Trustees Meeting for October 15th, 2018 at 7:01. Okay. First item, please.
Welcome, Hussein Dori here, Fadwa Hamud. Not here yet. Mary Lane.
Here.
Celia Nasser.
Here.
Mary Pachikoff.
Here.
James Thorne.
Here.
Chair Michael Mead.
Here. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes, recommended action. Move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees Policy Committee meeting September 17, 2018, and the Regular Board of Trustees meeting on September 17, 2018.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor of these minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? It's unanimous. Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Hi.
What's your name?
My name is Yusuf Farhat. I am on the basketball team here at Henry Ford. Thank you, President Cavahuna, Chair Mead, and members of the board.
Mr. Farhat, where are you from?
From Dearborn, Michigan, sir.
Welcome. What high school were you in?
Graduated from Fortson.
There you go. Okay, go.
Go ahead, okay.
We'll probably interrupt you throughout.
Sorry, don't worry about it. I graduated in the year of 2018, and in my high school days, I earned all league and all conference honors as a basketball player. I was also named to the High School All-State Honor Roll. And I chose to attend Henry Ford College because we have a great men's basketball program and allows me to showcase my basketball skills and represent my city in the best ways possible. And it's also my hometown. I live about five minutes down Fort Road.
And it has good academics.
Of course, above everything. My coach, Christopher Shepherd, describes me as a tremendous shooter who is athletic enough to defend in the Michigan Community College Athletic Association, and he also noted that I am a very solid student. I look forward to proving him right in both areas.
Good.
Now, I am pleased to read this month's HFC Board acknowledgements. Number one, on October 3rd, the on-campus voter registration drive ended, resulting in 223 completed applications. The Office of Student Activities will focus on the Get Out of the Vote campaign and encourage students to exercise their right to vote. On October 16th, 24th, and November 7th, students and families are invited to join Financial Aid Advisors and Enrollment Services Associates to receive hands-on assistance with applying for financial aid and setting up their federal student ID and completing the free application of federal student aid. Attendees will also receive information on what to expect in the financial aid process and steps to enroll at HFC. October 5th was National Manufacturing Day. This is an annual celebration of modern manufacturing and the great careers it offers. Wayne County, in partnership with Henry Ford College, focused on connecting students with employers and businesses that are a part of the area's rich manufacturing history by providing facility tours. The goal of Manufacturing Day is to help companies inspire the next generation to consider careers in manufacturing. Henry Ford College hosted over 400 students on Manufacturing Day. The Democracy Institution Consortium, a collaborative effort of several colleges and universities based at HFC that promotes civic engagement, has two events scheduled in October. October 4th, the Democracy Institute Consortium hosted an open forum on the Wayne County Circuit Court Judge Elections and the ballot initiatives. Candidates for open seats on the Circuit Court attended and answered questions under positions. The ballot initiatives were explained to voters in panel discussions. Approximately 100 students attended this event. Several voiced that they did not know about the ballot proposals, and they probably would not have voted on these if they had not attended the meeting. And on October 19th, the Democracy Institute Consortium will host the 15th Annual Student Political Issues Convention. The convention gathers 700 students from campuses across Southeast Michigan to build an agenda of political issues. National and state-elected officials will be in attendance to speak and interact with the student attendees. This event takes place in the Forfa Auditorium and is open to the public. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Farhat, you mentioned Get Out the Vote. Are you registered to vote?
Uh, yes, I am.
And will you be voting?
Most likely.
Good, most likely?
Most likely.
That's a yes.
Yes.
Okay, good.
It conflicts with my schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Farhat.
No problem.
Next item, please.
Next items, Presidents' Items.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and trustees. I have several things I want to update you on, most of which I've briefed you on in some regard in the months previous to today. Following tradition, I'll start with what is in your packet that I have finally come to describe as the Rainbow Chart of Cash. It is the Cash Forecast. As of about a week ago, the, this document is produced by Vice President Sadekowsky and his team, as you know, and it is our method of making sure that we will always have enough cash on hand throughout the year. And the last page in the bottom right is a graph that I will, you'll come to expect me to brief you on, and I'll do so now. The, in the bottom right portion of that graph, in the Cash Forecast, you'll see that the Cash Forecast for those last two lines are the more important lines. One is from June 30th of 2018. That is, we've obviously passed that, and that was $27.1 million. And then the Cash Forecast for June 30th of 2019 is $25.7 million. And you very likely can see that that's less than what we had at the end of the fiscal year, in other words, June of 2018. And you might already be able to gain the intuition that that is because of our revenues falling as a result of falling enrollment. You can also see that our low cash, which is the very bottom right-hand line, our low cash point for fiscal year 2019 was very early in the year, August 8, 2018, at $21.8 million. The available cash is the middle section of that chart, and for the fiscal year of 2019, it's there at $33.8 million. But of course, that is a projection that will change as the fiscal year continues. Any questions on this chart? Hearing none, I'll move to your attention to what is the white chart that you're all very familiar with. That is the General Fund Report, which is a summary as of the end of September. The revenues and expenditures for our institution and the General Fund are outlined, and they are also given as a comparison to what this college, again, through Mr. Sadekowsky's efforts, or expect for the entire fiscal year, and then how we are doing on that expectation as we proceed through the fiscal year, also in comparison to how we did the last fiscal year. I'll draw your attention to the bottom three lines, which are in bold, and they are total expenditures, total revenues, and then whether we are in excess or in a detriment in either regard. So, a couple of points I want to bring your attention to. On the total expenditures line, if you go to the third column in, you'll see budgeted as of 30 September 2018, and then actual. And those are our expenditures, and you'll see that we expected to have expenditures of almost $20 million at the end of September of 2018. And our expenditures, if you move one to the right, were a little under $19 million. One more column to the right, and you'll see that that means we expended almost $1.3 million less than we had expected. That is because we have a couple, well, a number of positions that remain open in one of our largest expenditure categories, which is salaries and compensation. Down below that is the, the second to bottom line is total revenues. For the budgeted time at the end of September, we expected to have revenues of $27.3 million, and our revenues were actually a bit less than that at $26.1 million, which you'll see if you move one cell to the right. One more cell to the right shows that that is, not surprisingly, $1.1 million less revenue than we expected to have at this time. That is mostly attributable to, in fact, solely attributable to the enrollment decline of 5.3%. The very bottom line is where we rank, or how we look when you put both the less expense than we thought we'd have and less revenue than we thought we'd have. And you can see that under the column marked "over/under budget to date," we are spending less but making less, and right now, we are $141,000 above where our budget would be expected to be. The far-right columns are those looking at what happened last year, and you've seen this chart in many iterations, so I won't belabor that point. Are there any questions for me, trustees, on this document? The next thing I'd like to bring your attention to is during this board meeting, you very likely will take up the question of appointments. And if you do take up the appointment of one, James Davies, he is here with you tonight, and I'd like to just introduce him to you. Mr. Davies is in the back of the room. He is a graduate of the Air Force Non-Commissioned Officer Academy in Lackland, Texas. He also graduated from the Air Force Lance Survival School in Fairchild, Washington. He's a proud member and former student at Henry Ford College, and he was a Staff Sergeant in the United States Air Force and was most, and thank you, Mr. Davies, for your service to our country. Mr. Davies comes to us most recently in security operations at the Children's Medical Center of Dayton, Ohio. Mr. Davies, we're a proud family here, and we're proud to have people like you who are going to take up our most important mission, which is delivering education in a secure and professional way. I have no doubt that you'll be able to carry on the traditions you've learned in the United States Air Force and at the medical facility where you worked. Please, trustees, if you do have an opportunity to meet with Mr. Davies this evening, I'd be happy to have you tell him, welcome to the team. Any questions for Mr. Davies? Moving on, thank you, Mr. Davies. Moving on, there's just a handful of things I'd like to draw your attention to. Many of these things, as I noted, I've updated you all in either an update or in one-to-one conversations. The, one thing that I'm proud of, and I can see Dr. Pat Chapman, Dr. Chapman, can you raise your hand? You all know the indefatigable Ms. Chapman. She's supplied a report to the State of Michigan asking for a grant under Governor Snyder's Marshall Plan. She did that in the middle of last month. As you recall, that is a $100 million appropriation that the state government put forth to try to support workforce development and creating pathways for children in P-12 districts through community colleges and onto meaningful work that frankly does not have enough skilled workforce. The state has suggested and directed us to build what they call consortiums, where we put together meetings of the mind from P-12 school districts, a community college, and then employers, where all of us can get together and share our plans for that type of process to move an individual from middle school to a meaningful career. And Dr. Chapman and Dr. Nealan have worked hard to make that presentation to the board. I believe the first process in that analysis is to propose to the state of Michigan the proposed consortium or collection of P-12 community college and employers. And then once they think that, they being the state, they think that that consortium may be what they're looking for, then they invite the consortium to apply for funding. I believe that's the step we're at. It's something that I told you as recently as March, when I was asking to be your colleague on this dais, that that was something we would push hard for because it was an opportunity for additional funding. I'm proud to report that the state sees our consortium as one of the largest groups of players in that space, but also one of those that they see as a model for what we can do for kids from eighth grade into careers. And not surprisingly, because this board has shown leadership in drawing connection between groups like those that Dr. Maleko leads and those that you all lead here at the college. So, if you do see Dr. Nealan or Dr. Chapman, please tell them that, if you do, and I hope you do, support them and hope that they are able to deliver on what is already a fruitful exercise. Last time we met here, you all had asked me about the enrollment at this institution, and I told you that it was down to 5.3%, but that I had expected and hoped to assign a couple members of the cabinet to take that up. And one of those is Dr. Daniel Herbst. He's in the audience today, I believe, Dr. Herbst is. And he literally wrote his dissertation on strategic enrollment management, and I've given him the task to develop a path to answer the question of our enrollment problems. And he already has identified a steering committee. He has decided that there will be two people that are champions of that committee, and then two people that are chairs of that committee. He has taken the bull by the horns himself and named himself as one of the champions of that steering committee, and he's found who I, one of the people who I think is the most intelligent, out-of-the-box thinkers in academic administration, that is Dr. Michael Nealan, to be a champion with him in that regard. They're sitting together in the gallery here today.
Holding hands.
Yes, holding hands.
Champions.
They promised to develop this plan through the steering committee by asking our entire community at the Henry Ford College for feedback about how we can answer this question. And then in January, I believe, Dr. Herbst will be presenting to you all his findings and his path forward. And those two working together, I have great confidence that we will have a plan to address that pressing need. And you'll start to come to know that as the SEM team, Strategic Enrollment Management Team. I've also asked the cabinet to help me identify ways that we, as a board, could show, I should say, we, as a college, can show that we take seriously our duty to be protectors of and keepers of the public's trust while we use the public finances. And I have asked my team to come to me when they find incidences where members of our team do just that. And one of those, is Zach still here? I saw Zach, there he is. Hi, Zach. You didn't know I was gonna call on you, but Zach, I've already told this board, and I wanted to say in public, Zach Polzin is a biology lab associate, and he and his colleague, Steve Shar, who I don't think is here, they noticed that hot plates in the lab had cords burning out, and they wanted to find a way to fix that, and they simply just looked at the cords and thought that it looked like something that an IT department may have. And so, they did go to the IT department here, which were quick to point out a box of unused cords, probably for IT equipment, and repurpose those things very quickly to these hot plates. Now, these cords, I think, are $81.51 each, and apparently, Zach, am I right, that these things are burning out quite consistently?
Periodically.
Yeah.
Throughout all the science classes.
Yeah, so that switch-out happened to the tune of $650. And I'll tell you, you know, our budget, our operating budget's north of $87 million, but $650, every cent counts. And when you're asking the community to support your institution, that kind of unprompted attempt to save funds is worth mentioning. And Zach, I appreciate who you are, and I can tell you that the board is interested in running a sound financial institution, or an institution that's financially sound, and you're helping us in that regard. Trustee Lane, you and I have often talked about the need to have recycling on this institution's campus. We have given that question to the Operations Council. There are also a number of individuals who have sues sponte, or on their own, formed a committee to deal with that. Zach Polzin's also on that committee. It's your day today, Zach. And my anticipation is by January, we'll have an idea of how this campus is gonna do recycling. The fact-finding process has begun. John Sadekowsky's involved in that. I believe Cynthia Glass is involved in that. And right now, we're looking at institutions like the Dearborn Public Schools and other public institutions that have taken this seriously. And I'll tell you that it's surprising to me, but during my third day on the job, I asked Kathy to recycle some things for me, and she kinda gave me a blank stare. So, I haven't found anyone who's against this at the college. In fact, several people have done what I have said, which is, why aren't we recycling materials? And so, we're gonna do that. But instead of it just coming from top-down in the president's office, this will be an employee and staff and faculty-initiated policy that I expect you'll hear from in the new year. I wanted to report to you that our awards conferred number has gone up. That means when we have what nearly everyone accepts as data that is success, that is certificates or degrees. Over the last fiscal year, we increased that number by 3%. We're up to 1,559 last year total. And we hope to make that even larger. I think you'll be hearing more about that from Dr. Herbst during his SEM presentation. Mr. Mitri, did you hear from trustee Hamud about the movie screening?
I didn't.
Okay. As you know, trustee Hamud is a practicing attorney, and I wanted to give you some feedback. She's going to be discussing a movie called The Notorious RBG, which stands for Ruth Bader Ginsburg. That'll be on the 18th, which is Thursday this week. A screening of that show, and then she'll be leading a discussion about that. You probably know Vice Chair Pelichkov is a member of the Dearborn City Relations Committee. Is it a committee or just city relations?
It's a committee.
Committee. That group will be meeting this Wednesday. I believe you chair that.
Yes, I do.
So, Vice Chair Pelichkov will be chairing that. I'll be honored to be in attendance there.
We could talk about recycling there with the city.
We could. That sounds like a good idea. One exciting development that just hit the news, and I pulled off the internet today that I think Dr. Nealan pointed to me, and I think Dr. Chapman, the dean of the School of Business Entrepreneurial and Professional Development, noted was that Goodwill Industries of Greater Detroit will partner with Henry Ford College on a new offering, which is a 16-week auto technician training protocol, where individuals will also receive support earning automotive technician credentials. Now, Goodwill will have the project coordinator, who will lead recruitment, enrollment, and support service management, and employment placement, and job retention for the students that they put through that program. And they say that this program will end with students being prepared to fill in-demand positions in their communities that offer hourly earnings of $20 an hour or higher. Another pat on the back for Dr. Nealan and Dr. Chapman. I will conclude with a couple communication pieces. In your packet, you'll see a student outreach and support pamphlet that is put out by Dr. Brenda Hildreth, who is a counselor at our institution, a member of John McDonald's 1650 local of the AFT. That is, is that right, Mr. McDonald? This is a good description of the kind of support services that we give to students, and I welcome you to peruse that. The packet you have also includes a postcard flyer for an opportunity to see art from Donald Cronkite at the Sisson Gallery here at Building F, also known as the Mackenzie Fine Arts Center on campus. That's October 15th through November 21st. And, excuse me, there will be a reception on October 19th, which is this Friday, from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. I may be there, and I invite any of the trustees who are interested to attend, and I invite all staff to attend and support that function. Finally, I will make note of an event that we had last week on Thursday at 5101, which is our campus, which is our restaurant here on campus. Dr. Pat Chapman, and with the support of Reginald Best, hosted a manufacturers' and industry partners' dinner. I was happy to make a talk at that event, where I told of the interest in this college and supporting manufacturing employers, working with our community, both in external and internal members of the Henry Ford College. We had faculty there. We had government entities beyond Henry Ford College there. Of course, we had fantastic food that was made by the Culinary Arts Department, and I think it was a very successful event that made Henry Ford College look good. I know it's hard to believe, but that is the list of things I have to talk about at today's board meeting, and I'd be happy to take any questions on any of those items, Mr. Chairman. Anybody guess?
I don't have any questions. I just have a couple of comments in reference to some of the things you mentioned. One about the automotive courses and the certifications. I happened to run into a dear friend of mine who teaches here, an instructor for the automotive and tech. He's been here for a number of years, came from Chrysler and retired, and was hired on here. And he says that is one of, he says, even though he knows that there's an enrollment decline in the campus at large, that, not in his section. He said his classes are full, and that there is so much demand for the students. Roush Industries and others are knocking at the door, and that they're high-paying jobs, and he can't get enough students out the door fast enough for the automotive industries and these tech jobs. So, quite frankly, I think that we really need to be sure that we are able to help these students in any way we can in making sure that they are successful here at the campus and promote that. The other thing was, I recently asked, and it was, and it's very small in nature, but the culinary department to help out a friend who has just recently opened a small business here and was looking for a chef and wanted to use somebody from the college. And he did just recently hire a second person for his business and is very happy with the quality of product that we are producing and helping him expand his business. So, I will just say that I have nothing but, have heard nothing but good things about the students and the quality of the students that we have coming from here. So, I'm happy to see that. We can really go out there and champion what we are producing.
Thank you, Vice Chair Pelichkov. I echo your sentiments, and I frankly couldn't have said it better. But I did leave something off unrelated that I do want you all to know that we didn't forget about. The board had asked for some comparison data on enrollment last time we met, and I had mentioned that the 15th of this month would be when we would report that, and I want to amend that for you all. While some of that data is in now, it is incomplete and frankly not required to be reported yet to the state. reported yet to the state. So, if it's amendable to the board, I would like some more time to report out that information and comparison data. I have communicated to you all in the past about that adjustment of my reporting deadline to you all, and I just wanted you to have an opportunity to tell me if you had any other thoughts on that. But at this point, I'd like to wait until the reporting deadline has come and met. That way, the information I'm giving to you is more accurate. I also am following what the chair has directed me in doing a poll, a call and poll of our colleagues and other community colleges to get ideas when they, what their enrollment is, in the event that they're willing to just offer that up to us. So, as long as it's amendable to the board, I could use some more time to give you that data, but know that we're still looking for it. And that is all I have.
You certainly do have more time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Next item, please.
Special reports. Henry Ford College Audit Presentation for Year Ended June 30th, 2018. Vice President Sackowski?
We've just completed college portion of the audit for year ending June 30th of 2018, and as in the tradition, we have Plant Moran has done that review with the audit committee. And tonight, I have Dana and Courtney, both from Plant Moran, to do that presentation. As you can remember, you probably remember seeing Mike Schragge a lot, but they've kicked Mike upstairs, so Mike's doing a few other things. So, Dana and Courtney, you ready?
As Mr. Sackowski mentioned, we did meet with the audit committee recently to go over the audit results for the college and the audit results in detail. And then, tonight, we plan to present to you the financial highlights of the college for the year ended June 30th, 2018. Happy to report that the college and Dearborn Public Schools will be receiving a clean or unmodified opinion, the opinion you'd expect to receive, and as a result of our audit, we did not identify any audit adjustments. So, congratulations to John and his team for the hard work that goes into the audit. One item to note is that the college did implement a new accounting pronouncement this year, and we'll cover that in the presentation. The first slide here includes the net position of the college for 2018 back to 2016. The net position is also known as, formerly known as, fund balance equity of the institution. The line first to point out is the total net position at the bottom, and it excludes GASB 68 and 75 liabilities. You'll note from '17 to '18, it did increase from $73.9 million to $76.7 million, so about a $2.8 million increase. So, great to see. The line above that...